All right, thank you. We shall call the City Council Committee of the Whole for April 25th, 2022 to order. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I have a correction. If the council doesn't have any vehement objection to changing the order on the agenda from if we go to five under other, I would like to move the B, item B, down to the bottom of the agenda under F. So if we could do that, I would appreciate it. It got a little bit displaced. So unless there's any objection to that, hearing none, then we'll do that. Thank you. Reports of, oh, I'm sorry, we have Mr. Maxwell Brooks. We have one individual for public comment here this evening. So Maxwell Brooks, Maxwell, welcome. Come on up. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Okay, I list my name and address, right?
You can.
Okay. My name is Maxwell Brooks. I live at 722 North State Street. First off, I'd like to take a moment and express my gratitude toward those who voted against the amendment that would lower the budget of growth dimensions from $55,000 to $35,000, and express my gratitude for your understanding of what growth dimensions provides to our city. To the select few that didn't, it's extremely disappointing to see your lack of commitment towards investing in the future of this city, its residents, its jobs, and its economy under the guise of saving taxpayer money. Investing in things like growth dimensions, our library, our parks, and the money under aspects of this city is not simply throwing away taxpayer money. It's a much-needed investment into the future of this city. Belviers at the crossroads, and the investment this city puts in now determines which road we travel. We can determine, we can travel the way of every other Illinois town, the way of Danville, the way of Kankakee, the way of Freeport, by refusing to invest and innovate and experience population loss, crime, poverty, and more negative increases. Or we can invest in organizations like growth dimensions to leverage our location, our population, our highway access, and our diverse and skilled population, something all uniquely velvier, to take us the way of growth and of success. And while growth dimensions may focus on industrial development, as somebody pointed out at the last meeting, industrial uses bring jobs, people, and money even more so than something like a clothing store. And that clothing store, it's part of a growing trend of decline in retail as e-commerce takes over, leading to yet another empty storefront in five years. And as thousands of people lose their jobs, as Stellantis lays off more and more people, we need these industrial jobs for people to put food on families, or on their, on, for people to put food on the table for their families and keep roofs over their heads and things that something like a Forever 21 or Trader Joe's would not provide. Stores that we got like that, such as Shoe Department, built in 2007, closed in 2012, and it sat for 10 years. That's what happens when we focus on things too much like that. $55,000 spent now is a $55,000 investment into the growth and the future of this city. The same goes for money spent on library, our parks, our police, and our fire department. It's not simply throwing away taxpayer money, it's ensuring this city keeps thriving. The reason I bring this up today is not to complain about the past. The past is just that, the past. However, the past can serve as a lesson and realization for the future, and that for some, I hope, is done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Maxwell. Appreciate you coming here this evening. We have no other speakers. We will move on here. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, public safety unfinished business, we have none this evening. Item two, public safety new business. We have item A, the Police Department update. Chief Woody, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since last month, the items that are notable for the Police Department, coming up, Sergeant Damon will be retiring after 26 years on the Police Department. His luncheon will be May 6th, 2022. Ceremony, cake, and coffee from noon to 1:00 PM for any of you that can make it would be much appreciated, I'm sure. Other than that, at the direction of the mayor, Deputy Chief Wallace will be applying for a COPS grant, Fiscal Year 22, for law enforcement, mental health, and awareness, which covers the cost of the mental wellness program for approximately two years if approved. This would be synonymous with the mental health wellness checks that the Police Department had requested through the budget process. So we are in the process of applying for that. Obviously, if it's something that's accepted, we'd bring it before the council to see if that's approved and then go forward from there. Otherwise, this weekend, community policing will be participating in the medication collection at Belvidere Township Building. That'll be on Saturday, 4:30 2022, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That would conclude my update for this evening. I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Chief Woody? Chief, the luncheon regarding Sergeant Damon's retirement, that is at the PSB, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That will be at the PSB downstairs in the training room.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, thank you. We have item B, purchase with the police, purchase of the police K-9 and training. Chief Woody?
Thank you again, Mayor. If you'll turn to the memos in your packet titled Purchase of Police K-9 and Training, on Monday, March 7th, 2022, the City Council approved the acceptance of a $15,000 donation. The intent of the donation, anticipated use of the funds, was to pay for the purchase of a new department K-9 and training for the K-9 handler. Attached, you will find a contract and purchase agreement from FM K-9 for the purchase of a new K-9 in the amount of $7,000. In addition, you'll find an invoice from Cedar Creek Kennels LLC for a 10-week basic handler course in the amount of $5,500. I would request a motion to approve the signing of the contract for FM K-9, as well as expenditures of $7,000 for the purchase of the new K-9 from FM K-9, and $5,500 for K-9 handler training from Cedar Creek Kennels LLC to be taken from the $15,000 donation that was approved on March 7th, 2022.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any comments, discussion, concerns regarding that motion? Alderwoman Frank?
I just want clarification. So will we have two K-9s when we purchase this next one?
Yes, we will. We have one currently that's in active duty. There will be a second one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Chief, you have item C, vacation time carryover?
Yes, sir. If you turn to the memo in your packet titled Vacation Time Carryover, Officer Sunset Winsler was hired on August 6th, 2021. She attended the 14-week Basic Law Enforcement Academy from September 13th to December 17th, 2021. Officer Winsler then began the field training program on December 20th, 2021. She's scheduled to complete Step Four on May 6th, 2022. Due to her required attendance for the field training program, Officer Winsler was not able to utilize all of her vacation time. She currently has a balance of 103.5 hours, which I'm requesting she be allowed to carry over into Fiscal Year 23. I would request a motion to authorize Officer Sunset Winsler to carry over 103.5 hours of unused vacation time, as shown above, from Fiscal Year 22, and use it in Fiscal Year 23.
Okay, can I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I thought maybe there was a typo here. So if she was hired August 6th, 2021, she's actually only been there nine months as of right now. So she's has 103.5 hours, which is two and a half weeks. How does your vacation run, from January to December, or from hire date to hire date? How does she already have three weeks of vacation that she didn't use when she was only hired in August?
Sir, can you help calculate that for me?
I'd have to look at your book. A lot of it is probably holidays.
So the Police Department, like the Fire Department, does book all their holidays as vacation time?
So it comes up?
Because they're able to work on their vacation days. So they count it just like they would a vacation if it's a holiday. So it depends on how many holidays she's passed since her hire date. It's how many hours would be out there. So each holiday is 12 hours at a time right there alone. And that would have been Thanksgiving, two days, Christmas, New Year's, and a few others, too. So, and she wasn't able to use any of it, I assume.
No, she, while she's on field training, unless it's sick time or scheduled time off that she normally gets, a new recruit's not going to be able to take any type of holiday and/or vacation.
Okay, so on day one, how much vacation time does a brand-new officer get?
Zero.
So this is all holiday, three weeks of holiday pay in a four-month period?
Well, plus it's calculated 12 hours.
Right, three shifts.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just like thinking, like, if she gets three weeks in '23 and three weeks in '22, that's six weeks, basically, in less than one year, something that most people work 15 to 20 years for.
Right, no, it's, we're talking, I gotta check with the chief. I'm assuming this is mostly holiday pay.
Yeah, and they would accrue the holidays as they pass them. So as the holidays pass, a new recruit's going to get that holiday. And it comes out to roughly 8.5 shifts, which for patrol would be two weeks. So it would be just over seven shifts.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Woody or Sarah? All right, hearing none. We have a motion then to authorize Officer Sunset Winsler to carry over 103.5 hours of unused vacation time, as shown above, from Fiscal Year 2022, and use it in Fiscal Year 2023. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item D, Fire Department update. Captain Shadle, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past month, the skilled and dedicated members of the Belvidere Fire Department have responded to 241 calls for service. They had seven fire incidents, two building fires, one on Baker Street, and then one auto aid with District Two. It was a dryer fire. They had a car fire and two garbage can fires that were exterior of the home and caused some siding damage, but were put out right away. So they also responded to, excuse me, 167 emergency medical incidents, 15 car accidents, six accidents with injuries, one vehicle verse pedestrian, eight accidents with no injuries. They responded to four cardiac arrests, three deceased on arrival, eight trauma emergencies, one gas leak, one power line down, and 29 service calls, such as lift assist or to assist a disabled person, or to assist other agencies like PD or Public Works. So that is, call-wise, what they were up to this last, since our last meeting. Just wanted to real quick go over the training topics that they covered the last month. So obviously, what we, our goal is to provide excellent service. We prepare every day. We do some type of training every day. So last month's training, the largest-scale training was a live burn tower training at District Two, and this was a county-wide training. So nine of our members went, and they worked on skills such as fire attack, RIT group, laddering, and search-and-rescue in a live-fire environment with the members of the different departments that we work together with on fire calls every time. So in addition to that in-house training, we practiced our pre-connect, pre-connect attack with the water supply. So our goal, anytime we get an actual fire scene, is to be able to deploy that pre-connect, which is attached to the fire truck for 200 feet, and get water flowing in under a minute. So that's something that we practice quite often. So we did ground ladder drills at the old St. Joe's Hospital. Mr. Bush was kind enough to give us permission to do that there. Functional donning and doffing. So we're just practicing putting our air packs and face piece on and off, but we do it in coordination with pulling a hose line. Because in the academy, you do it sitting down, and you put it all on at once. But in real life, you put half of it on, pull your hose line, go to the door where you're about to make entry, and then put your face piece on, and then make entry. So we practice it in a functional fashion. We did that. We also practiced low-angle rescue. An example of that would be like if someone was, we've rescued people out of the river, and the riverbanks are steep, and so we can use ropes and haul systems to help us assist that. We practiced that. EMS training, we practiced, or we covered our trauma SMOs. We practiced our long lead-out. So if a 200-foot pre-connect doesn't reach where we gotta take the hose and put the fire, the long lead-out is connecting additional hose out the back, and that's up to 1,000 feet plus our, or not 1,000, it's less than 1,400 feet. So it's double, plus our 150-foot on top of that. So a long lead-out, we practiced that. Then, of course, we, in compliance with IDOL regulations, we went over our anti-harassment policy. So we are, as a department, we're preparing for the retirement of Chief Heiser. Chief Heiser served the community well for 27 years. I wanted to let the community know, and you guys know that we have an open house scheduled at the Boone County Historical Museum. It's Sunday, May 15th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And I'd like to end by taking this opportunity to thank Chief Heiser for his 27 years and his dedication to the community and the Belvidere Fire Department.
Thank you, Captain Shadle. I as well would like to thank him, Chief Heiser, for his service here in the community, and certainly look forward to May 15th. Also, thank you for coming here this evening as captain. I appreciate it, and thank you for the report update. All right, moving on, we have item three, finance and personnel unfinished business. We have none. Finance and personnel new business. Finance Department update, Ms. Shannon Hanson.
Thank you. I just have one quick thing. The auditors will be on-site, May 11th and 12th. You have in your packets a copy of a draft letter you can expect to receive in the mail from Sickich, along with a questionnaire.
Okay. Is there any questions at all for Ms. Hanson? Okay. Thank you. And item B, National League of Cities Entrepreneurship Program Grant. We have this on the agenda. I would ask for a motion to accept the $15,000 grant. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. I would ask if Pam Fettis would come to the podium, if she would mind, and perhaps help me to answer any questions. If you have any questions, perhaps, I know that we have in the past went for a Kaufman grant in the past, the city has.
Correct. This is the third time that we've asked for the National League of Cities Kaufman Foundation Grant to address services for the city. The first one was Fast Track Training. That's a training program that we still continue, and we get sponsorships to provide and deliver this training. The last one was for Source Finder, which we call Locally Compass, in which we receive resources to provide an assessment of services that are available in our region, as well as those that business can use throughout their period of time in business. And then this one is to focus on services available to businesses. The mayor wanted to make sure that we also look at all businesses, but our focus is also on Hispanic businesses, and identify some of the barriers, which we've talked about, and how we can address those programs. So we can maximize the businesses taking advantage of the resources that are available to them. And we'll develop partnerships to sustain these programs as well.
Is there any questions regarding that grant, the motion on the floor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to accept the $15,000 grant funds from the National League of Cities as part of the city's inclusive entrepreneurship program as it passed through to growth dimensions. Growth Dimensions has helped in the past with these, with Kaufman Grants. So if there's no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item C, we have on here this evening, purchasing guidelines. In your packet, there's a memo from City Attorney Drella regarding the purchasing guidelines that we have and that we are proposing. I guess we would take these as two motions. An amendment to the City of Belvidere Municipal Code allowing each department head to expand, expend up to $2,500 for budgeted expenses only without prior council approval would be one of them.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we could do this as one. I probably didn't draft as artfully as I could have. This could be one motion, and actually, it's gonna direct me to draft an ordinance, I'll come back to your ordinance form.
Okay.
There'd be an amendment to the municipal code to allow department heads to expend up to $2,500 for budgeted purposes only without prior council approval, and for the mayor to expend up to $15,000 for budget items without prior council approval.
Okay, could we get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. So I do believe that in this memo, there's some guidelines that we had used, but this would certainly make it more clear regarding the expenses. Of course, any expenditures the council will be made aware of, the council will see, and the council will get to vote on that accordingly. Certainly no shell game here. It just allows us so that we, if we have to make an expenditure between the time that the council would see it, we can do that to conduct business, and then you will have a chance to see it. Actually, it looks like they have, we have it here to department heads that where they can spend up to $1,200 without prior council approval, if it is for budgeted expenses. And the mayor historically has been approved for up to $2,500 without council approval, only for budgeted expenses.
So the reason this comes to you is, since the time I've been here, that's the way the city did things. And I've always said, well, where's the ordinance? Where's the authority for it? And you've never been able to find it. We have found, actually, I found minutes from a very old City Council meeting predating 2000, where then Alderman Bali had made a motion to approve the spending policy, and it was approved. I could never find that spending policy anywhere. Most cities do have one, and as you can imagine, it's almost impossible to run any kind of organization, including a city, without the ability to go out and buy pens, paper, fuel, sometimes salt, the police chief occasionally, ammunition, or other sundries that their department uses. And you order those on a routine basis, and you guys approve those on a routine basis through bills payable. But the technical reading of the Illinois Municipal Code says, thou shall not spend money unless you have prior council approve either delegated approval, that's what we're talking about doing here, or approval for each expenditure. And I attached a list of area cities and what their policies are, because I decided, I've looked up at doing this for years, and it just never seemed to, time to bring it to the council. But most of the cities have a threshold for city council approval, actually at $20,000 or above, exceptions being Cherry Valley and Freeport, South Boyton and Sycamore. And I threw Naperville, and they're just for fun, because I ran across that one. I couldn't believe they delegated $100,000 of spending to their city manager, because that seems like an outrageous amount of money to give one person the authority to just go spend it. But what this, what this policy actually does, and while at first glance you think, oh, gosh, we're giving somebody authority to spend money, it really just codifies what we've been doing all along anyway. Historically, as you know, and I've heard council members make this comment, we're seeing these bills payable, but the money's already spent, the stuff's already purchased. This just codifies what we're doing. We need salt. Danny calls and orders salt. It gets delivered, we pay the check, you guys see the bill payable. We need fuel. Bruncher Danny calls the fuel company, they deliver the fuel. The clerk needs paper for the copiers. She orders the paper, it gets delivered, you see the bills payable. So this just codifies what we've been doing and sets spending limits in the ordinance, and it will help us with our audit letter from the auditors as well.
Actually, this will bring us into compliance for what we do currently. Not very often, but we do every time that we order fuel. We would, in this respect, then, we would be in compliance. And so it might be a laundry list cleanup, is how I look at it, but I think it's better to do things according to what the amendment to the municipal code would allow us to do, and that we have been doing. I think it would clean that up. So Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So we're basically, we don't really have anything in writing, I guess, but we're basically taking this from department heads from 1,200 to 2,500, and then the mayor from 2,500 to 15,000, right?
That was the policy that, I think it goes all the way to Mayor Brereton had put out there, but the reality was, how often do we spend more than $2,500 for fuel, Danny?
25 is not gonna cover it.
We've been doing it more than that since 2003. And that's why I tried to draft the proposal, along with what we've been doing, what you've been proposing. The $2,500 figure was pretty much- figure was pretty much, I think, utilized for, I'll call them one-off purchases. We need new shields for the police officers or the city attorney wants a brand-new laptop or something like that.
All right.
Continue.
So, I guess my concern is, although, you know, I may not be worried about the current mayor, but future mayors, like, why would a mayor need to spend $15,000 on something without council approval?
Well, because, actually, we do that now. We pay bills now that, you know, I don't know what the schedule is whenever we, on average, what we, how we purchase fuel, but I know that I would, I would say maybe over six weeks, I don't know, or two months, but it-
Probably three weeks on gasoline. Four to six weeks on diesel fuel. But a big thing that will help is wear parts at the sewer plant, wells. I can't wait for, if I have a pump go down, I need it now. I don't have that ability or the luxury to wait, you know, for two meetings to get something approved.
And we, we have had that happen. As you recall, we have had that happen where we've needed parts down at the treatment plant, I believe, and we also needed parts at a certain well. So, we have done that. I guess, you know, the council, since we have done this and we do, we do this currently, I think the council, any, you know, concern, harbor in that they may have going forward would be certainly up to the council to do what they would do regardless, even regardless who's in here, even currently or whatever. They see the bills, they're aware of when the bills come up. We will make you aware of any purchases that are made anyhow. And then it's up to you to ask questions regarding that and be satisfied that those repairs or that purchase was required or needed.
Yes, important matter. The bills payable process is not changing. I mean, you'll still lay all the bills and sell the payables and what was spent, what have you. And frankly, if you don't like the spending pattern of a department head or a mayor, council is always free to change that ordinance. So, that's, I mean, that is out there. The reason for it is, we've been doing it. Probably shouldn't have been doing it the way we're doing it and this fixes that problem.
Yes. Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I noticed for Woodstock, they have a note on here that the, in emergencies, the manager can exceed the $25,000 threshold. So, I'm thinking maybe we should, if we don't already have that, add that in there too in case we have like a major catastrophe in town or something like that where you need to spend more than the limit that we're setting for.
We could certainly do that. I didn't want to get greedy, but-
Well, you would change the parameters of the motion that's on the floor, then you would increase that from $15,000 to $25,000. And I thought that it was probably, most of the time, the occurrences that we have done, and this would bring us into compliance, would be within the $15,000 threshold. I don't like to use the word greedy like the city attorney used, but it probably is a little bit more realistic that we wouldn't have items that, that would be that, that would be exceed the $15,000. So, I think, I think that's where I would ask the council, I feel comfortable with. You never know. You could have an item that was $50,000. But, you know, I think most of these are $15,000 below and would bring us into compliance with what we should have on the books here. Alderman Porter, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I wasn't actually suggesting the $25,000 figure. I was just using it as an example to just say that we might want to, you know, authorize above the $15,000 in case we have the, have a real emergency or something.
I don't think that that's actually necessary in this case. I can look at it. Some cities have given, given specific emergency powers to a mayor. State statute gives you some, but not necessarily spending authority. However, quite frankly, if you had that true catastrophic emergency, either the mayor will simply do it and then come back and ask for forgiveness from the council, or more likely, they may be calling a special emergency meeting to get authorization for something like that. And let's use the $15,000 for the, get it going and then call an emergency meeting to get further authorization if necessary.
And do we have any other questions? Okay. So, we have a motion there to allow each department head to spend up to $2,500 for budgeted expenses only without prior council approval and that would allow the mayor to expend up to $15,000 for budgeted items without prior council approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, thank you. And under five other, we have item A, appointment of Bradley R. Anderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, as you're aware, Mr. Andrew Race is not going to be able to continue and Mr. Anderson would be, would fill that vacancy on the Planning Commission, Planning Building, Zoning Commission. I have known Mr. Anderson for over 50 years and I am really grateful and thankful that we have individuals that have been a lifelong resident of Belvidere, City of Belvidere, to be, to want to serve the city in this capacity. It's not easy. We don't have people that are lining up to take responsibility for these commission appointments and I certainly appreciate Mr. Anderson doing this. He is here this evening, so if anybody had any questions, Mr. Anderson, you can stand up and appreciate it. Thank you for coming this evening. So, everybody can put a face with a name. All we've done is really add to the confusion, another Anderson on the city. So, we've, we've really compounded our, our name issue, I guess, but thank you, Brad. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming down too. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? If not, I would ask for a motion. Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Snow, to approve Brad Anderson to the appointment, vacant appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This appointment is to fill the seat of Andrew Ratz. The appointment is for the unexpired term ending April 30th, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Motion passed. And we are going to move item B, as I'd requested, down to the bottom of this list after the executive session. Item C, the Public Works Irene Road Realignment Project, we have here. I would ask for a motion then to approve the proposal from CES Incorporated, the amount not to exceed $101,120 to complete the design engineering for Irene, Irene Road Realignment Project. And this work will be paid for from the capital funds with reimbursement from grant funds. Could I get that as a motion for discussion, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Danny, did you have any comments regarding this motion? I know Brent is not here, but we have already received, or we have already applied for, excuse me, we have already applied for grant and project, grant funding for the Irene Road Realignment Project. I anticipate, I know Alder, excuse me, State Representative Dave Vella was very good for the City of Belvidere, worked with me to ensure that we receive DCEO grant funding in the amount of $700,000. And the I.D. EDP funds and the I.D. TARP funds that are on your memo will cover the realignment of Irene Road. So, if there's any questions regarding that, that's what's on the table here this evening. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, I recall the presentation from General Mills and she was talking about the realignment project. Was General Mills not contributing to this?
The way the agreement is drafted, that will be up for final approval next Monday night, is the road is to be constructed and paid for by grant monies the city's applying for. The $7,000 from Representative Vella from the mayor's informing is dedicated funding as a special grant already approved by the General Assembly. The remaining, we've been, we're applying for, and while nothing's ever a certain deal until you get the money, we've been indicated that we're going to get the money. So, the way the grant's drafted is, is the grant money's going to pay for the road. If the grants don't come in, then it's a developer obligation to pay the road. I mean, the Skennell would be either build the road or we just simply take it off the project. And they wouldn't, they also wouldn't get their incentives either at that point. So, the road is contingent upon receiving the grants.
Okay. But they're supplying the easement for-
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
No, it's dedicated right away.
Dedicated right away. Eighty feet, I think it was, eighty feet of dedicated right away. So, that will go through in order to straighten out the, in order to make that realignment a reality. It will go through the property that they have. Of course, as you recall, it gives two additional lots then that we will be able to serve, not only with water and sewer services, but also with roadway access. And this is a big part of it, rather than to drive parallel along bypass 20 and then make an immediate right and head north as Irene Road exists today. Certainly not conducive to truck traffic, which we anticipate with Project Kelly. We're going to be able to have more of that, especially most of that traffic, I believe, 80% of that traffic. I think it was suggested was going to be to the south to bypass 20. So, yes, continue.
So, Attorney Drella, did you say if the grants don't come through, then Skennell is on the hook for this? Otherwise, it's just going to remain the way it is?
Correct. The city could, of course, at that time choose to step also. That's a discussion we don't have to have. But as written, if the grants don't come through, so the road is not going to be done, then they can cancel the contract. The land will still be next, but we wouldn't have to pay the incentives or they could choose to do the road.
First Alderman Flurry, then Alderwoman Mohaw. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So, just to clarify, so the $101,000 is expected to then be reimbursed, the full amount, not just some of it, fully reimbursed if we receive these grants is, looks pretty well going to happen?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be a part of it. Yes.
Thank you.
Part of that project. And keep in mind, this is just for us to be able to get off the dime and have CES do, complete the design engineering work rather than wait and put us perhaps behind a project that we would, we would want to get done sooner than later. So, that's all it amounts to. Any other, Alderwoman Mohaw?
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Was this what they were putting money and asked for a war?
No.
No.
What was that for?
I think what she's referring to was the money at the other end of Irene Road for improvements at Newburgh.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
The five, the five percent?
I'm King Escrow in terms of real estate closure. No, they are, that is something completely different. They are going to pay 5% of the anticipated cost improvements to Newburgh Road, give that to the city upfront, I guess you could call it escrow. And then when we do that intersection, that would be available to use for that.
Correct. So, I guess, you know, we have to crawl before we can walk. And so, I think that's what we're trying to do is, is be able to, you know, plan. I have no reason, I don't think anybody has to doubt that we are going to get the funding, the funding will come through from the state. And I believe, you know, we'll be in a better position here if we approve the engineering proposal from CES. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. I was just going to ask you if we had a timeframe, like, when we would know if we're going to get that funding from Mr. Vella and when would we start the project?
Well, I don't know what the timeline was. I thought maybe it was going to be May 1st, I thought, or maybe May 15th. Brent Anderson had indicated to me that it was going to be soon, but to give you a drop-dead date, you know how things work, I don't believe that I could do that, but I do believe that it'll be very soon. Hopefully, by either one of those dates. Any other question? All right. So, we have then a motion and a second on the floor recommending the approval of the proposal from CES Inc. in an amount not to exceed $101,120 to complete the design engineering for the Irene Road Realignment Project. This work will be paid for from capital funds with reimbursement from grant funding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item D, Public Works 2022 MFT Street Maintenance Program. Mr. Anderson?
Mayor, council, I would recommend a motion to approve this 2022 MFT Street Maintenance Program. Do you want these out right off? Everybody has it in front of them, correct?
Yes. No, I would rather you don't read them.
Thank you very much.
We'll be, we'll be here a while.
Especially me stumbling through it.
Okay. We'll let Alderman Snow read them. All right. Now, so do we have a motion regarding the MFT Street Maintenance Program for 2022, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion, any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Danny, our street department doesn't do these overlays in-house, right? Those are, we hire that out?
Correct.
Okay. So, then when it comes to alleys, you guys do those. Are we, are we getting in the, in the business of starting on those this spring already?
Edit a little quicker this year than we did in the past and try to have these alleys done long before leaves start falling out of the sky.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Acting Director Anderson, the other Director Anderson? Alderwoman Frank?
Oh, it's not for Mr. Anderson. I was just going to say, is this going to be published? The, for the public to see?
I believe he usually publishes, does he? I believe.
I think it's on the website.
I believe it's usually on the website.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item E is a Dram Shop Insurance. I'll defer to the city attorney on this. I know there was a typo, but I think it corrects it, so.
So, once every year, I have the unfortunate responsibility, and I don't know how this fell on me, to go over all the applications for renewable liquor licenses. So, when I do that, I usually take a gander quickly at the code. And one of the things I look at most closely is our liquor liability insurance requirements. You recall, last year we made an amendment to the code that actually reduced the required amount of insurance because we were out of line with everybody else, including the state. We just required way too much insurance and it was costing our establishments too much money. money. This year, I went back to look at it to make sure, because I recall doing that, I noticed an error in our code, in a different section of the code, and when I went back and tried to find out when this error occurred, it goes back decades, as far as I can tell. I can't, in fact, I didn't even see the original ordinance, but it required $1,000 per occurrence of insurance, according to that version of the code. So obviously, it's supposed to be $1 million, that's what we voted on last year as well, and we made the change, didn't get changed that other part of the code. So I'm recommending is modifying the code as set forth in the attached draft to clarify that our minimum amount of insurance per occurrence is $1 million, not $1,000.
Okay, then, could we get a motion to amend Section 10-79 as set forth in the attached draft? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman McGee. Any other questions regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we would, could I get a motion then to move into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee or official pursuant to 2C 1, and the collective bargaining matters pursuant to Section 2C 2 of the Open Meetings Act, please? The, we have that as a motion? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Stevens. I think the individuals that will stay for this, Ms. Hanson. Okay, could we, all those in favor, will answer yes. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Do I have to? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohaw?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.